Looks like we can pin a clock, we're called to meet in the order for today. Tuesday, March 1st, first thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda with the addendum we have.
Move to approve the agenda with the addition?
Yeah, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion passed, next thing, citizens to be heard, if anybody out there wants to speak that's not on the agenda? Everybody's here just to listen to us, huh? Okay, good. We'll move on to, next thing is employee recognition this morning that we have, we've got four employees today that we want to recognize. Ah, first one we got is Stacy Dawkins. Stacy's not here today. Okay, what about Rebecca Fee? In recognition here, 50 years of grateful service to the county. Oh, it's this year, you Rebecca?
No, I'm Rebecca, I'm the supervisor.
Good, you're gonna give us a few words about Rebecca, good.
Okay, thank you, very much.
Yes.
So, thank you Rebecca for your dedication to Clay County and the people you serve for the past 15 years. During the last 15 years Rebecca has worked in the disability unit at Social Services. She's provided assessments and case management to people with disabilities, and she certainly has a passion and a love for what she does and the people she serves, so, thank you.
Well, thank you, you've stayed with us for 15 years. We encourage you to do the rest of the people, but stay on for us. Is Stacy here or you parked her? We gotta get this.
She's not, I know she's not here.
Okay, very good. Monty Martin, Monty's not here today either, huh? And I know Steve is here. Steve's been with us for 25 years. I've known Steve, yeah, Steve and my son were classmates together, so, I've known Steve for quite a long time already, and your family's been dedicated to the police force so far, for 25 years. Bill, you got a few words for Steve?
I do have a few words. Steve kinda joined the sheriff's office back in 1991, where he spent two years in jail before he came over to the law enforcement. I believe it was 1999 when you were first promoted to lieutenant of patrol, and later on you took over investigations. But his, he told me his favorite thing is, every day he has to read every police report, he just loved it.
Mm-hmm.
Every now and then he falls asleep with the beat. I guess, thank you.
Well, thanks for being with us as long.
Thank you.
I know Monty, I see Monty a lot too, he's one of the things the...
He's indoor, working at the community center.
Okay, yes, he does very good work, thank you. Ah, no, that was a mistake. Rebecca Lee was in there. Yeah, she was there. She was there. Oh. Do I have this? Yeah, you're gonna have, thank you.
My name?
Next thing we'll do, the agenda is to approve the minutes from the last two meetings. Need a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair, second.
Any discussion of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passed.
Mr. Chair?
I'll set the bills to him. Thank you. And we forgot about the bills, um...
I move approval, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to make an announcement to county board members and anybody else listening, I will not be running for a third term this fall, just wanted to make that public, thank you.
Well, and as long as Wayne is doing that, Mr. Chair, I'll announce that I am seeking reelection this year, so, might as well get that out on the table.
So, we got those two districts, might as well cover my district, yeah, I'm gonna do that too this year, so, our terms, all three of us, our terms are up this year, and it looks like Grant and I are willing to do it again, we enjoyed it so much, and plan on doing it again. Well, he's not in my district.
Are you asking for Tim off?
No, he was on... I thought I hit one votesack, but he's not in my district. We'll move on to the West Central Minnesota Community's Action 2015 Report, there we got a Ms. Becker Koch, or Missy Becker Koch, I guess. Yeah, please, yes, please, come up.
And Mandy.
And you're Director of Operations?
I actually have just been appointed Executive Director.
Executive, oh, okay, it's not interim anymore, we can strike the interim, okay, very good.
So, let Mandy introduce herself.
I'm Mandy Broughton, I am the Energy Assistance and Housing Director at West Central Community's Action. Well, I thought all those spectators were here to see me.
Just for you, huh?
Yeah.
It's disappointing when they all get up and leave.
Well, thanks for allowing us to come, I wanted to come and just do an update, we do an update to county boards about services that we offer in their respective counties. So, Clay County, we do energy assistance and our weatherization program. And so, last year for the 2015 heating season, we served 1,939 households and direct heating assistance of 1,185,337. So, that's a big chunk of our energy assistance budget that's for Clay County. And then we also did weatherization to the amount of 127,375. So, we just wanted to come and do a little presentation on the services that we offer in Clay and Wilken Counties. Does anybody have any questions about those programs, or...
Must be an indication that it's cold up here, we gotta do that.
Well, last year was a whole lot colder than this year, I think statewide our applications are down this year.
Okay, oh, probably certainly the better weather we have there, okay.
And better fuel prices.
Yeah, that helps too, that helps. So, did you have something to do with those fuel prices, or...
Oh, sure. So, we have an office next door at the Clay County Family Service Center, and, you know, we work with Lakes and Prairies Community Action Council as well, so, we want to continue that work.
Okay.
Any questions? Mandy is with me to answer more direct questions about energy assistance, being she's the director, she knows that program kind of inside and out, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How long can, you know, can you be on energy assistance? Is there a cutoff limit, or does it depend upon individual circumstances?
Applicants have to reapply yearly, so, there's not a cutoff period as far as you can only be on it five years, or 10 years, or anything like that. It's ongoing yearly, we relook at their income eligibility for the program. And these payments are made directly to the vendor of the client's choice, so, the payments come actually from the state of Minnesota to whether it be Morehead Public Service, or Mom and Pop Oil Company, whatever the client chooses.
For fuel assistance.
Yes, yes, yeah. What are the numbers in Clay County over the past few years, are they on the rise of applicants, or steady? I would say they're steady, this year we're actually seeing about an 8% decrease across the entire state of Minnesota. So, each year it rises and falls, you know, the year of the propane crisis was a year that our numbers were... High. Very high, and that was driven because of the price of fuel during that time, so, it really, the weather for the winter, all of that plays such a factor in it that it's hard to really say that there's a plateau that it sits on. Right. What are the, do you have the numbers for Clay County of that, that had applied? For this year? For this year, the, I don't have the actual number for Clay County per se today, I know that we're sitting at about 8% less than last year about this time, so, we're probably, I would say probably sitting right around the 1,200 to 1,500 applicants served at this point. This is really when we start seeing the decline in applications as the winter season comes down. So, the 1,200 to 1,500 is agency-wide, or county? County. Okay, thank you. And the program does go until May 31st, and so, we encourage people to apply, you know, until then, and... We've just sent out, the final mailing will be done this Friday, 1,700 letters for people that had not applied this year, and the majority of them are elderly individuals, so, we're just seeing if maybe there's been relocation that's happened, but that would be the number of applications we have not received from people that applied last year, but not yet this year, so...
So, excuse me, of those 1,700 letters you sent out, did they, you say they got funds last year, but they didn't get the funds this year, I mean, didn't apply?
Yep, they have not applied yet this year. And of course, the hope is that they economically, financially, don't need the assistance, that's the hope. A lot of times what we find with elderly folks is that they really wanna wait and make sure everybody else that really needs it gets help before maybe they ask, you know, that's kinda what we see, and they're keeping their furnaces, thermostats turned down low, and, you know, those are the folks that we really wanna help, and we, and so that's why our agency does that kind of last push to see if there's anybody else out there that needs assistance.
So, if you had 1,700 less, I mean, that didn't apply, and your decrease is only 8%, so you must have had a lot of new applications this year.
Yes, yes, we have seen a lot of new applications, I don't have that number yet until the final number comes in at the end of the year, but we can tell by the number of, that they're being logged in at, and there's been a lot of new, new individuals. And with these letters going out, the response that we get back, we track to see if maybe people were making more income, or if they had changes in their life that made them more able to support themselves through the heating season, so we use that to help educate our current eligible families.
So, where do your funds come from then, is that state funds, or...
Well, the, the energy assistance is a federal program. Last, was it last year that we got the hit with... Two years ago, the state of Minnesota actually put money in, that was when the big propane crisis happened, and the state of Minnesota put in 25 million in addition to the federal allocation, but primarily it's just a federal, federal Department of Energy program.
So, you've had a year where you ran out of funds, or something like that, or...
Oh, yes. Last year, we actually ran out about a month early.
So, then those people just didn't get anything then, or...
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good. How do, how do people find out about your program?
We have a number of different ways that we provide outreach, so we do a real big push in the fall and in the spring with posters and, and different things with tear-offs in all the different counties that we serve, we try to get to all the locations that we can. We send out applications to all of our vendors, along with flyers and information to them. We have radio slots that we advertise for anyone that needs assistance in the local papers, we've done on the side of busing companies, receipt papers at the grocery store, different places like that, to try, try to really get the word out. We work very closely with our vendors, and make sure that they know, especially our mom and pop businesses, they know their customers, they know when there's a family that really could use the help, and we really rely on them to, to be a voice for them, and get us in touch with the families that definitely need it. What I handed out to you is our annual report for 2015, and we try and circulate that as well, to get out information to people about all the services that we provide. So, our core counties are Grant, Pope, Douglas, Stevenson, Traverse, and then we do some programming in Clay and Wilken, and then also some programming, we do our Head Start Program in Otter Tail and Wadena Counties. So, we're kinda large geographically.
Very good. Any more questions?
I had the pleasure to get to know both Jenny, Mojo, and Wayne in working with the Lakes and Prairies Board of Directors, and I enjoyed that, and thank you for your support, and we look forward to working together into the future too, so... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Missy, thank you for keeping our county warm.
Yeah, and thanks for having us, and, you know, we'd like to do this annually, just to come up and provide an update, and, so, hopefully we'll see you in a year.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations on your new position.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we need a corrections officer, Julie? We do, huh? And that's what you're here for, probably, huh?
That's what I'm here for. I had an agenda. So, I have two vacancies, one's a male full-time position, one's a female position, both full-time, both, one actually is gonna be going to Social Services, so she, will be moving within the county here, the other one's taking a post office job, both are looking for Monday through Friday day shift jobs, and they are plenty out there, so we're seeing more people leave the shift work behind. So, I'm requesting to fill both vacancies immediately, there will be some minor cost savings on both positions, and they are both budgeted positions.
Okay. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passed.
Thank you, and on behalf of Monty, you wanted me to let you know, he appreciates this and thank you, he had a project in Delaware that's on a time schedule, and they're running behind, so, he had to be out there, otherwise he would have been here this morning.
Yes, so, it'd be nice to see him. Tell him thank you, too.
Yes, he's an amazing employee, and very lucky to have him, he does so much for the county, that people don't even realize, I think, how much work he does, so...
Yes, I was looking forward to meeting, seeing him and not meeting him, I've met him several times already, he's a great...
Thank you very much.
He is a great employee. And, that goes for you too, Steve, yeah, you still... And since you're up here next, come on up. Steve has adopted resolution, approved acceptance of $5,000 grant for elder abuse.
Hello.
Hello, this is...
Good morning.
Good morning. What this grant was for, is in January this year, sheriff's office applied for a grant with, along with other stakeholders with the Minnesota, let's see. Minnesota Department of Public Safety Office of Justice Programs, is a $5,000 grant to assist us in our World Elder Abuse Awareness Day event that we have in Clay County, we've had that five years in a row, and recently, and this is the second year, we've been in collaboration with Cass County on this grant, what we're gonna use it for is public awareness, outreach material, PSAs, and we're gonna bring a couple speakers to our event this year. The speakers, a little background on who and what they are, one is Lieutenant Scott Campbell of the Duluth Police Department, he's gonna talk about his mother was victimized by his brother financially, and was abused by her, by him, and he's gonna talk about that incident, what he went through as a law enforcement officer, what he went through as a family member, and he's also gonna discuss prevention to the crowd. The crowd that we've currently had, or attendance, has been about 100 people over the last five years, and hopefully with this grant money, we can make it a bigger event than it has been. The other speaker we're hoping to get is Tara Patet, she's an assistant St. Paul City Prosecutor, and she's been instrumental in Minnesota with developing statute on a felony level for elder abuse, and she's gonna talk about that, and that's what we're gonna use this money for.
When you're talking about the event, when is this event that you're talking about?
This event is gonna be June 15th at the Yum Comms Center here in Morehead.
Okay.
And we're in the process of developing that right now with this group.
Steve, that's, that's obviously a really good deal to, to be able to educate the elderly on, 'cause there's an awful lot of that goes on. I was just, I was just thinking here, would, would it be possible to video that presentation?
I can discuss it.
I guess the reason being, there's a lot of senior citizens facilities, places where they might be able to sit around, where they can sit around, and they can, they have a joint area where they can maybe watch something, and I think it might be a good way to get it out to even more seniors, because, because there's victims that happen in those places as well.
Mm-hmm, definitely.
And, you know, so even though your, your audience is good with what you're talking about, but to even make it reach more people...
And that's what this grant is for.
Yeah, but that might, you know, I just throw that out as a suggestion.
Yeah, that hasn't even been discussed in our meetings.
I think Dale Raleigh would definitely enjoy, or not enjoy, but would appreciate having something like that to distribute, you know, he has so many meetings that he goes to with that demographic.
But I mean, it's easy nowadays to, to put something like that onto a CD, and then just, you know, those CDs can go to these, all the retirement homes and...
We're in talks with these speakers, and I can get that cleared through them.
Yeah, you might, they need to have their permission to do that.
With their permission, I think that'd be a great idea.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll move to approve the resolution to accept the $5,000 grant.
Second. Okay, any further, Steve, you want to talk?
No, I appreciate your time, and hopefully, it's the first time I've done a grant, and I think this is a great cause.
Good job.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Post? Thank you very much, Steve, and thank you for 25 years of service. Yes. What's that other, request to fill restorative justice facilitator, someone?
I'm Michelle Olsonowski with the Clay County Attorney's Office with Victim Services, and I help supervise the restorative justice program. And we had a vacancy recently here, the end of December, when our full-time facilitator resigned, and so we are looking, we spent the last couple months kind of determining what that position looks like, and after kind of seeing where that might go, we're comfortable and are looking to fill that position again, at that full-time level for a restorative justice facilitator, so that would be our hope, and why I'm coming before you to fill that position.
It's a longstanding program in the county, and...
It's a longstanding, good program.
They've done excellent job, but it's a great, great thing to continue, so...
And it's funded through three streams?
It is, yep, so we do get some funding through the board here, we get some funding through the state of Minnesota, and then locally with the Clay County Collaborative.
And currently, that's budgeted, correct, right?
It is, yes.
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any further offer, Michelle?
No, if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to share, but...
Now, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, same time, motion passed.
All right, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Michelle. Are we down, oh no, we got Brian here, thank you.
It's wishful thinking.
Okay, I just thought I'd try. Mr. Burke? Oh, we're looking at the approval of the contract with construction engineers for construction management and risk services for our correctional facility, and we've got Brian and Jenny here for that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission, I asked Jenny to join me here, because rather than just someone babbling away, I thought you, maybe you wanted someone that knew something, so...
Good thought.
I do have a memo, doesn't explain a great deal of it, but we really need to engage, I guess, in some dialogue in reference to this contract that we're gonna ask you to sign today. There's two documents here, as you see, it's the, the general conditions, and then the, also the contract for the construction, and these are the two documents, I did not include those in your board packet, they're pretty thick, I do know, and I mentioned in the memo here, that, that Commissioner Campbell, who chairs the jail building committee and the jail finance committee, this is more of a finance issue, sat in on Jenny and our, and my meeting, where we went through the, well, basically the whole contract, and we followed up on a few issues, I guess we want to assure you that the wordage of the contract is such that this is the pre-construction agreement that we're going forward with, and until the company presents a guaranteed maximum price, all you are obligating yourself today is that quarter percent of the project. Once you are satisfied that the work has been done, and now you know exactly what that project is going to cost, no more than that, I should say, guaranteed maximum price, you're not obligating anything beyond that. We, we tried, clarified some points that were brought up, and I've mentioned those in there, a couple of them, and one was that first paragraph that I just talked about, the second was on furnishing information to the owner and the architect, Commissioner Campbell had a, had an opinion on that, and we clarified that, and as late as yesterday afternoon, I had some clarifying points that, oh, we, Jenny and I had engaged in some communication with the architect too, and we sought their expert opinion on some things, and the language of the contract and things, so, just a couple other points, I guess, one, in the original contract, there was an 8% rate for, I'll say, change orders and things that, that they would have, we negotiated that down to a 5%, and that's about as low as most of the contracts will go. Also, I think one other point that was kind of important, that they were asking for 10% retainage on the contingency that, and we just kinda thought that they really shouldn't profit of not using contingency money, and that was discussed at length with them yesterday, because, for example, on a $30 million project, you may have a contingency fund of $1 million, and, and if only half of that is spent, and they return, you know, $500,000 to us, they keep 10% of that, well, that's $50,000, and I didn't think they were doing a lot for that, so, that is zero now, so, in fact, contingency should be very conservative too, because, and we will watch that very closely, I know the commissioners have, will be in on the building meetings and different things, but it's okay to have a contingency, but sometimes you'll see contingencies, and then that establishes the maximum price, and then it always seems like there's reason to spend that contingency, because you can add this, and you can add that, and you're still within your maximum price, and, and I think we're gonna be much more conservative, I think you want us to be much more conservative than that, so we'll be watching that very closely. But Jenny, I can certainly answer any questions in regards to this, we've gone through it page by page, and we feel that they, it is ready for your approval, and will certainly entertain any questions that you may have.
Yes, what was the effective date of the contract, when does it actually, when will they be on board working?
Well, Mr. Chair, the date you sign it, they will be. Well, Mr. Chair, the date you sign it, they will be, although they did attend the last meeting that we had. And, and they're okay with that, but it'll be effective. And that doesn't really affect the price, for example, they attended the last meeting. But what they're doing is they're taking just a lump sum payment. When they establish that maximum price of that product, where you're gonna pay one quarter percent, it'll be between probably sixty-five to eighty-five thousand dollars that you will pay for any pre-construction work that they do up in establishing that. So, but it'll, it'll effectively be in effect when we sign it, when you sign it.
Yeah, to clarify too, the, there was, the one area there, it had that ten-day notice. Was that on the change orders or what was?
That was for selection of subcontractors.
Yes, selection of subcontractors. And what, and what it did was it basically said that they would notify the architect and then the architect would have to notify us. And then there was a ten-day timeframe in there, if it wasn't done, it was just automatically accepted. And we just said that, well, we better not, just in case there's a communication gap, the language should be that they notify both of us right away upfront. And so that, I think that's been done. And the, those other areas, the, the area that, when we talked about change orders, they had used a different word. What was their?
Do you remember, Brian, what they?
They called it...
And we interpreted it as change order.
Yeah, and, and that's, and that's the part that scares me, is when I...
We don't wanna interpret something.
We don't wanna interpret anything, we wanna be clear.
Yeah, I think it's article, let's see, it's document one thirty-three.
Yeah, there's two separate documents that would need to be signed. And one is really our relationship with the construction manager at risk, the terms of payment, et cetera. The second document is really the terms of how they go about doing their work, so that we understand how they will do each part of their work.
Has that been clarified with them, that it means change order?
Well, that's what, I wanna, that's why I'm asking too, I wanna, you know, I...
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners Campbell and Wayland, I did clarify every element of it, but let me just find it here. I think it's under five point one, point two.
We're just sort of hearing a fire alarm.
Yeah, I don't think it's a fire alarm, must be a vehicle. What they do refer to is changes in the work and I'm...
Additive changes.
Yeah, additive changes, yes, there we go. And that is for changes in the work.
So something that was not a part of the initial design when the maximum price was established. I think the example we talked about was if we later determined we wanted a different kind of skylight or a different, you know, then, then we have that option, but we're gonna pay more for it because that's the purpose of...
Over and above the...
Right, of establishing this relationship, yeah.
Right. And now it's coming back to our discussion, Mr. Chair, that was changes that we initiate is where we pay the additional. Now, if there's misinterpretation by them in establishing something, then we do not pay the, the change order.
Well, that could work both ways, right? It could go down if they happen to find a more cost-effective during the construction.
That's right.
Well, but once we establish the maximum amount, that's, we're pretty much paying that, aren't we?
That's what, well, yes, we are. That's where the contingency is important. Because I think adding the contingency, you're gonna pay on that contingency price. And that's what was one of the discussion points, was why should they retain ten percent of it? Because they're getting paid on the full amount of the contingency when it's added in. And that's why we want that contingency to be very conservative in nature, for, for a lot of different reasons. But, but yeah, that change order is important because that's when we initiate a change. And sometimes you might say, hey, yes, we do wanna awning over this entryway where you didn't have one before. And then that's gonna be an extra cost and, and they deserve to have that.
And there are ways where our guaranteed maximum price, it could be, in the end run, it could be lower.
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't wanna misinterpret what I said there, but...
Yeah, that contingency that's not used will be refunded.
Right.
Now you say the contingency is not used, I thought we were going down to zero percent of contingency.
No, the year, the zero percent was on that, what they would get to keep of that contingency. I think you still need some contingency to move the project forward, but a reasonable amount.
Thank you, yeah, I misunderstood that a little bit, thank you.
The negotiated change would be that we would get all of the contingency back that was not used. None of it would go to the construction management firm.
Yeah, very good.
I'll move to approve the contract with construction engineers.
I guess, this is through the pre-construction phase, correct? I, I would like the motion to, if you wouldn't mind, Grant, I'd like the motion to be approved but through the pre-construction phase.
Sure, specifies that, that's fine.
And I would second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, just for clarity, and, and both, both parties understand that it's through the pre-construction, because that's the way the contract language is as well.
Let me just make sure.
That was one specific change that we made to the language that was submitted is that we are obligated to pay the quarter of a percent now, when we sign the contract. And when that guaranteed maximum price is established, we will pay that quarter percent. But until we accept the guaranteed maximum price, we will not pay any further. So, you know, the reality, the reality, reality of it could be that we get to the pre-construction, or through the pre-construction, and then we go no farther. That, that could happen through this contract. Likely, it won't, but we will have that option.
Excuse me, ma'am, did you have something to offer or are you just here, just here to learn, huh? Yeah, okay, very good, thank you. No, I appreciate what you guys did on this contract, to get the rate change, you know, down to five percent and looking at the contingency. I'm glad you guys looked that over very good and thank you very much for that and...
We were aided by the expertise of the architect as well. I mean, it's really proven valuable to have their opinion and their experience. They know what's customary in these kinds of agreements, where, you know, for a county that's not built a jail before in, in recent history, we didn't really know what, what those rates should be or what was reasonable. So, that was very valuable.
Yeah, we're taking a big step here today, so...
They are.
Thank you so much for all your work you've done. Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to approve this contract with them and all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Same sign, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Okay, with that, we'll go on to committee reports. Today, we'll start with Wayne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Tuesday, February twenty-third, building committee meeting, Joe Olson went over his goals, reviewed the courthouse plan to do what needed to be done, particularly the outdated heating system. Options will be looked at and brought to the board down the line. The family service center, the front awning and concrete project was gone over and will come before the board for final approval. Also discussed the smoke detectors situation, not a situation regarding smoke detectors. Power plant updates, he went over the power plant updates that were also needed. And he defined the overall planning process as to what his timeline is. Thursday, February twenty-fifth, Lakes and Prairies Finance Committee meeting and then the full board meeting. The finance committee went over all the monthly finance reports, every expense is carefully documented. We approved the budget beginning March first, two thousand sixteen, through February twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, rather, two thousand seventeen, and sent to the full board for final approval. At the full board meeting, we had a presentation by Schultz Architects on the components of the future Lakes and Prairies facility that will be constructed. We approved the finance committee financial report, approved requests for grants in several areas. And then there was the head start report and the executive director's report. And also the president's report that I was not there for. And I would defer to Jenny if she would like to add anything to what I have at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Kevin?
Okay, we had an interesting week, to say the least, this last week. I'll start off with the, last week we had a second monthly meeting on the flood diversion project. And that was followed by the, right, right after the six-member presentation on the new joint powers agreement, which I'll comment on in a second. In the actual diversion meeting, it was very limited and it, basically, the only action that was taken was on extending the CH two contract through March eleventh. And that was when our next board, next meet, but there were some other details that were, needed, were worked out. And the same thing with Ernst &amp; Young task order, that was the same issue there. So, so the, the meeting itself was quite short. The, the presentation that was given on the, for the new JPA that each entity is asked to review and put comments on, I, I'm just wondering if we as a board are gonna, I think we should go through this together at some point in time. I know it, it allows for any individual to comment too on, on issues on it, but I certainly intend to go through this to make sure that issues that are important to Clay County and the city are, are met in here. Because I think they're asking for, Clay County to vote on this by, is it early April? Is that, do I have it right now?
Here, here it is, here it's April twelfth, or, or either the April twelfth meeting or the twenty-sixth meeting.
They would like to see us approve this by. But the process begins with, is if we, if we have any issues, they would like to be notified while it's still in its draft form to, that's, could then be considered. Because ultimately, the, what I understand to work is the diversion authority will vote on it and then go to the member counties to agree with it, its final form. Because I think that the first outfit that'll vote on it will be the diversion authority. Am I correct in that, Brian?
Yes, I believe it was, as, as more of a recommending.
Right, as a recommending, but, and then, so then after that, but it...
Weren't they wanting comments by that, by the end of March though? So maybe it would be in our interest to add it to a, a meeting agenda in the future and we can discuss it.
And that, and that's what I wanted to make sure that everybody was, was okay with that. And I, you know, I think we should allow significant enough time to, to walk through it in case each one of us might have different issues with it as you, as you go through it. But it's an important document and it's one that's gonna be binding for, it'll be a permanent document. So, for us to be members on, we need to really review it closely and, and have a discussion. And that's kind of what I wanted to make sure that we're on, all on the same page with. And it's just a matter of, we have just a couple of meetings left in March that we can do it on, so.
Well, I have to agree with you on that. I think it is an important document that we're gonna put our names on this here. That we do have a discussion, I know they went through it, Mr. Shockley went through it pretty good and stuff like that, but I think we need to get it out that we agree with all that.
If I could, could I just suggest that we put it on the, the meeting for the fifteenth? Is, would that be, is that not good?
It's fine. Oh, is he gone that week?
I may not be there, I need to, I fly out to Washington DC that day.
Okay, well, okay, so then, well, I suppose we could still do it on the twenty-second. I just wanna make sure that everybody has time to read through it. We could do it the eighth, if people would be ready, but I know there's a lot going on this week for a lot of people already. Brian, what do you?
Well, and Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell, also, I forwarded that meeting along too, and I haven't responded to it yet or looked at it much, but the Morehead, City of Morehead, Clay County and the Buffalo Watershed, the fact that they should get together, the representatives on that, get together so that they're all on the same page. So, you'll be doing that sometime and I don't know if John responded with it.
I responded to the same dates as you, I believe.
Okay, okay, that's right. Oh, I did respond to that.
But I still think, I still, you know, I still think that meeting could go on. We could, we could still have the dialogue here.
Let's focus on what, when Mr. Shockley needs the comments by. If he needs the comments before the twenty-second, then we should put it on the agenda for next week.
Yeah, I thought he said the twentieth or twenty-ninth is when he wants.
Twenty-second, I think will work.
Brian, could you clarify that? And if, as long as he says that after, I mean, between the twenties, right after the twenty-second would be okay, then that gives everybody, it's a thick enough document to read.
And Commissioner Campbell, did you understand that, I received an email, I think it was either late yesterday or early this morning, that Mr. Shockley will send an updated version every Monday? So he may be incorporating a change, it might be a document in the works. And so it would be important for everybody to have the most recent version on the twenty-second. So I think he indicated that will come out, he will send that every Monday.
Okay. I'm starting to get a lot of feedback.
Get that distributed on Monday, the twenty-first.
I know, I, I know, I had, right after the initial presentation, just on the, just on the short version, I had several questions that I, or comments that I made right that day, but I, so I'm assuming I'll even have more myself as we go forward. But I just wanna make sure that we have an opportunity as a board to go through this together before we make a vote on it.
Okay, no, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, so, okay, so that's, for now, that's the diversion issue. I'm gonna, I'm gonna save Prairie Lakes for last because that's, that's a deal on its own. But Solid Waste meeting last week, we got a good update on our recycling programs by Shannon. Julie in the household had this waste, there's a lot of really good things happening there. She was commenting on how we keep getting...
I think he's trying to take care of it, but...
No, I keep pushing mine.
But we can, we, the, the used paint program has really been really well-received in our county. And there's, I think she mentioned that there's only, she only had like three or four cans of paint available for people to come and get. So the, the idea of people that aren't using their full paint when they bring it in there and somebody else comes and gets it, it's really working well. And I think that's a really, really good, really good deal. We did have a, a presentation by one of our interns regarding plastic, the use of plastic bags and what they do in terms of our landfills and causing problems. So there was, you know, I think there's gonna be some public education on, on ways to minimize the uses of those in the future, so we'll, we'll wait for more information from them in that study. Then yesterday, we had a community facilities task force meeting and we heard a, an update from Morehead area's schools on their projects that they had the financing approved through the bond issue. And we went over our jail and law enforcement, where we are today, with our plans during that. And then there's Prairie Lakes. And Prairie Lakes is, it'd be an understatement just to say it's disappointing in what's going on there. The facility, the new boiler that's there has been nothing but trouble. We as Prairie Lakes as a board has taken the position that the contractors have not fulfilled their agreement. That part has been argued and it's in the stages to go to mitigation.
So has the contractor's been paid for all this already?
They, well, there is a, there's a reserve, I think somewhere in the area of four hundred thousand dollars. The only problem with that is the...
Not a forty million.
The, the problems far, far exceed the four hundred thousand. And it seems like every month we go to that meeting, there's a brand-new issue that's going on in that new facility. And I, I wanna make it perfectly clear that, that the MRF is not the issue there. The MRF is working fine. That would be the part that you would think would have some issues because of all the moving parts to it. And that's the, that's the part where you've, you've obviously, I know you've toured and, and that part is doing well, so as we...
So the problems with the steam capture?
Right, well, it's, it's with the boiler itself, the burner. And it's, I mean, these aren't small problems. And it's, I mean, these aren't small problems. We, we come up, it seems like there's a new $200,000 problem every, every month we go there. And then they say, well, we're gonna fix it, but then it's, then they tell us it's gonna happen again. And so it's, it's extremely frustrating. Our county is 15% member and that means that, that we're gonna be responsible for, for significant amounts here. And then there's the budget itself, the budget itself, you know, we're fairly new members and some of these previous budgets, we didn't even get to vote on, the last one we did, but their revenues forecasts have been way off and their expenses, of course, because of all these things, have skyrocketed. And so it's, it's, it's a financial debacle, to say the least, right now, that we're, we're going, we're struggling to meet. As a result of our last meeting and with these ongoing issues, you may have gotten your invitation, I hope you have by now, but there's, there's scheduled to be a joint board meeting, again with all county board members. So a public meeting for all members, which would be our full county board. And we've asked that county, each county attorney for each county come along to those meetings and some of them requested county auditors. I don't think it's important for our county auditor to be there. We, we're gonna have to pay what we have to pay as going forward here. But the whole idea is to bring all county boards together to really talk about this issue and to figure out how we're gonna be able to rectify it, to get it back in, in the proper direction. And we've asked, I know we've had, Kirk has been involved with us and, and I met, Grant and I as members on the solid waste committee, we met with Brian and our county attorney, Jenny and Kirk. And we talked about some concerns that we have as a county and, and with that, we had sent a, we asked Kirk to send a, a letter for some clarification on some issues to the director of the facility and I, there was a response that I just read in an email recently and haven't had a chance to digest it all yet. But needless to say, we're hoping that as many of you can, can come to that meeting on the 23rd and we've gotta, we've gotta figure out how we can solve this problem. You know, we've, we've been asked to the point where, you know, one of the options is, do we, do we temporarily shut that thing down until we know, have the answers to how it can be fixed? We didn't get a really nice response on that from the director, but, but I think all, you know, everything needs to be on the table as to what our options are to fix it. But it's, it's very disappointing. You know, we, we as a county wanna remain, it's important, even from MPCA, they want us to see us deal with these things on a regional basis. Well, here we are and we entered into a regional deal and it's, unfortunately, it's, I think it's in the design that's creating most of these headaches and we've gotta solve it. With that, Mr. Chairman, I, I regretfully am done with my report.
No, thanks, very good report. Kirk, did you have any add-on that facility?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I think that pretty much covers it all.
Okay. Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I had the planning commission, we went through the election of officers and with Mr. Kramnoff stepping down to serve on the SWCD State Board, Amos Baer was elected the new chair for that. We did go through three aggregate mining permits, those were, those were approved. And I think for the first time in a long time, we didn't have any residents speaking out in opposition, which if you know planning issues, that never happens. I did wanna say though, that in 2015, Clay County did receive over $500,000 in gravel taxes. So that's something that's always, we are having lots of new permits coming to the, the planning commission, but in, in that, we are also seeing an increase in gravel taxes. I also attended the six entity meeting with the diversion authority, the new JPA, I think is a, going to be a great agreement to move forward. And it does clarify a lot of the responsibilities for infrastructure going forward. And I think those were, those are appointments that really need to, to be out in the open as we move forward. I also attended the lakes and prairies meeting last week. Commissioner Ingersoll stated that very well, covered that. And I also attended the facilities committee yesterday with the schools. They are starting to dig ground, I should say the Moorhead Public Schools. They are starting to dig ground on that new elementary school, April, the beginning of April. They do have a address now for that, 25th Street, I believe, right?
Forty fifth.
Forty fifth Street, sorry. Forty fifth Street in South, Moorhead, south of Horizon. And also, we covered our, our facilities from the joint building at the landfill to the continued effort between our solid waste and Moorhead solid waste and the jail. And as our residents are increasingly strapped with property taxes, it will be very important for us to advocate for any other revenue capture stream for our project because crop prices are not going up and land rent prices are stressful for the farmers. So with that, that concludes my reports.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add to that, I, I know we're, you know, we are, we are considering other revenue streams and I, we're hoping that our finance committee can really have something real soon to, I know every commissioner here is probably being asked questions by your constituents regarding, you know, this is gonna be probably one of the biggest public works projects Clay County has ever done, if not the biggest. And so I know there's questions coming out, so hopefully within the next month or two, we can really provide everybody here with, with some good documentation that, that helps kinda give a direction of where the finances needs to come from, so. We'll get to that as soon as, we're working on it.
I had some of the similar meetings last week, the Prairie Lakes, which Kevin went on and we could, and have discussed that at length for many days. Also attended the Clay County solid waste advisory meeting and Kevin went over that. And the, the presentation on the plastic bags that you get at the grocery store and stuff is actually pretty interesting, how many, I think she said that actually, average household uses like 750 to 1,000 a year. So, you know, you multiply that, you see why it's an issue that has to be dealt with.
They don't degrade either.
No, and they don't degrade, that's the, that's the problem. So it's a, it's a local and a national issue dealing with that. Went to the diversion meeting and, on the new joint powers agreement and I thought that was helpful and informative. Went to the chamber meeting this morning and another discussion on the EIS for the diversion. And had an MRCC meeting at the end of the week, last week too, on our transportation issues. We're trying to fine tune that because the legislature is starting now and we're trying to get our positions to them so they know where the rural counties stand on transportation issues. And tomorrow, a number of us are heading for St. Paul to present to the legislature in hopes of getting some state bonding money to assist with our jail project, so that was it for me.
Well, I guess I attended the joint powers agreement, we discussed that, had the chamber meeting this morning. The others that, we had a building committee meeting and Wayne covered some of that, but you know, we're talking about the heat pump plant, you know, and you're aware, there's 94 heat pumps in this area. You know, that's a lot of heat. If you look at a heat pump in a home, you know, to take care of your home, we've got 94 of them in the building. And what Joe was looking at is making one big unit, you know, and getting rid of all the heat pumps and going with one big unit, you know. And there's also a big boiler down there that probably needs some replacements. He's got some big projects coming up. Another thing they'll be looking at is, which would like input probably from you guys, that front on and in front of the family service center. Do you like it? Don't you like it? Should it be taken out? You know, it's, it's a maintenance problem as far as removing snow and water runs off, freezes and they have a problem with that, the ice and stuff like that. So they're looking at, should they remove the whole thing? You know, and so I don't know if you've got some opinion on that or not, you know, I know-
One reason to keep it would be if someone needed to wait for a ride, but there's a huge lobby to where they can do that. So if it's a logistical issue and, and a nightmare for building maintenance, then I'd say get rid of it.
It is, it's starting to rust and we have to do something with it because it's starting to rust and stuff like that, yes.
Mr. Chair, has it, that decision been made to remove it?
Well, I don't know if the final decision, we're looking at, I mean, I'm just telling you that it's what's probably gonna happen there. And if you wanna form an opinion, we sort of decided that it probably should be taken out of there.
Is that out of the normal maintenance budget then, or is it?
Mr. Chair, it'll be coming out of the capital improvement fund. What he, he asked to do quite a bit of concrete work in front of the building, so he feels it's a good time to take a look at that, but it's about a $35,000 project.
Mr. Chair, and, and Brian, I, I thought when we had the, I thought these capital improvement projects required, required us to list the projects that would be included. And I don't remember that. I, I, just from a technical standpoint, I, I just wanna make sure that we're okay.
Yeah.
Am I, am I not correct that we were, everything that we wanted to do was supposed to be listed and include, all-inclusive?
I think it is, isn't it?
Yes, I do believe it is, Mr. Chair, but I think it would be good to, excuse me, if we could to probably have an update to the board on that capital because, because Joe has, has found a few other things and, and even they're three and five and five and seven years out, but I think it's good to, to add to it and, and bring it to the board for approval again.
I just wanna make sure that we're following the rules of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But makes, I agree with Commissioner Modo, that it makes sense that if that's, if that's nothing but a-
Yeah, it is, it means to get the snow off from underneath there and stuff, you know. You know, I don't know what, other than making it look nice, which no longer is happening because it's starting to rust out, you know, it needs some repair. So should we spend money on repairs or should we remove it? You know, so that's, there's a lot of discussion held on that, you know.
Get rid of it.
Okay. We got one vote for getting rid of it there, okay?
Call us and think.
Yeah, very good. Went to the Heartland Trail, so hell, Donald Holly. Boy, the more we discuss this snowmobile trail, it's, the tougher it's getting, you know, I mean, now we find either the park doesn't allow snowmobiles in the park, you know, so. Then another thing, you're gonna have an asphalt trail, you know, where does the snow melt the fastest off? Asphalt, you know, so it's, there's so many options that are coming up that, you know, it's gonna-
Like I say, the diversion's a cakewalk compared to the Heartland Trail, so.
Yeah, I think you're, so I get it right, the other. And the same thing, if you're gonna use it for a bicycle trail, which is, which is one of the major things that they wanted to use it for. So now you come, well, you'd go to the Buffalo Park and they accommodate parking for that, you know, and then the bathroom facilities available for all the people there. And there's so many things that came up, you know, you're gonna have extra bikers there and stuff like that, are they gonna allow, is the parks gonna allow all this parking there for the bikers and stuff like that? So it's, I think the more we discuss this, the more problems we come up with, you know. We gotta come up with some solutions pretty good, pretty quick, I mean. Family healthcare, Thursday evening, they're pretty much discussed yet. The West Fargo thing, they're looking at July, first they wanna do some opening and some stuff there and, I guess pretty much there is pretty much just the executive directors' report of ours. Things are going good there, they had a good, the heart drive that they had, that went pretty good for them, so. Other than that, I guess that was my meetings for this week. Brian, you wanna come over here, whatever you do from there, that's fine too.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Probably the item that I wanna touch base with you, the first here is, I mean, a lot of things have been covered, but we've been looking and talking about a, another training session meeting with the commissioners and the department heads. And we've done that now for, you know, quite a few years. It seems to be productive. I know last year didn't work out real well for the, for the commissioners, but we were wondering about April 26th, which is a Tuesday, and we would do it in conjunction with the board meeting. So we would probably start at 10 o'clock and then work through lunch and be done at about 3 o'clock. And so we were just wondering about April 26th before we get some things.
That's fine, Brian.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll move forward with 26th then. And what we're looking at this year is, of course, the big issue of retaining employees, recruiting them and retaining them. And I, I know that's kind of a hot topic all the way around, but we've had lots of-
Hiring this year.
And hiring is expensive and we wanna look at the reasons why. We do have a speaker coming in that'll talk about it, to get, if that date will work. And then Dan and, and Vicki are working with me on this, so we'll get, we'll get that set up and we'll, we'll plan to do something similar that we've done some other years. So we'll move forward on that building committee.
Say, Brian?
Yes, sir.
If I can, the only, that date to the 26th, is that, I know that we have a jail construction meeting the Monday.
Yes.
I thought that, that we were gonna have when the architects come, that they were gonna be spending Tuesdays going over with the sheriff's department. I'm just wondering, is there any, any-
Conflict there?
Any conflict with any of our department heads that might have to be at those?
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a very good point.
I just, I don't wanna research it to be sure.
Yes, we will, we'll, we'll make sure of that.
Okay.
Because yes, I do remember that. I don't know that 26th was one of the days.
Okay, I don't, I don't foresee that, just raising.
That's why we picked that Tuesday, 'cause there's getting so many conflicting meetings now. It's just really getting busy in regards to that, so. Okay, to continue then, Mr. Chair, the building committee, that has been talked about, jail finance, more discussion on the financing arrangements with the, with the city. And I think that has been talked about by both the commissioners that have been in under discussions on that. Had a discussion with the architects, we had about an hour and a half phone conversation with the architects. The engineering firm, Houston, referenced the underground structure under 8th Avenue, 9th and 10th Street. And we're looking at the costs it'll take to move those infrastructures and, and we've, we've gotta decide that first, what needs to be done and how it can be done. So Mike Love from Houston Engineering is, is working on that as, as we speak, so we'll move things along there. We discussed, had a, had a meeting, referenced discussion of the P3 financing. That's, that's very complex. You're, you're getting bits and pieces of it, but boy, there's a lot of work that's going into, to that process as well. The solid waste meeting has been talked about and also the one with, referenced the perm solid waste in March 23rd. I just, Commissioner Campbell covered that very well to set that aside. And I think the idea, that is on Wednesday morning and they want, would like all commissioners to be over there. And I know Jenny, I think is gonna be available too. We had that six entity joint powers agreement, that's been talked about. The diversion meeting's been talked about. We, we've had, we had another, Tim signed another purchase agreement this morning on another piece of property over there. We sent, we signed one last Thursday afternoon. It was kind of comical how these come up, it was at the last minute thing and, but I think we have one now in the west block that we don't have a purchase agreement on and we have three in the east block that are, we're all, we're, we're, we're working on it. We've got an appraisal going on and whatnot. But other than those four, and then the two that aren't going to, we've got everything pretty much sewed up. So you give us till June and we'll have everything.
Both blocks.
That's both blocks.
Both blocks.
Yeah. It's going extremely well and, and we're working on, Dave Overbaugh, county engineer, is working on a, kind of a brief design for a parking lot, how we can get that, 'cause we're gonna be moving on that this summer. We've gotta get that infrastructure closed down under 8th Street. We've gotta get a parking lot for staging areas. We gotta work with, with zoning for the city on, on changing those zones and designs of the parking lot. Plus, we've got that contract going now, that's gonna help a great deal. We've gotta talk about our agreement with the city and how far we go forward with the law enforcement center, 'cause I think there's pretty good synergy right now to, to make that happen as well. And we gotta start talking about- that happen as well, and we gotta start talking about it pretty fast and furious to get designs going and things, so there's, there's a, a lot of moving parts right now in regards to all of this, so.
I'm just, I don't wanna interrupt you, but I'm glad you mentioned parking, you know, but I, 'cause I know it's on days like today when there's, must be jury duty going on or whatever, and, I mean, parking is, I mean, it's an issue now, and it's really gonna be an issue in next year.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's gonna be, I mean, we're gonna take away probably 100 parking spots or more, you know, I mean, we're already hurting for parking spots now, you know, and I think the sooner we can get, I don't know whether we can, how many of these properties we own across the street, whether we can park in driveways or not, or is that our property? Can we park there? You know, can we use that as a parking area? Can we designate them or park across the driveway or whatever the case may be, you know, and maybe a bunch of places that we can utilize in the meantime, you know? If they're our property, let's utilize them now, if we can, I don't, I don't know what the situation is, excuse me, go ahead.
No, that's all right, I think that's what we need, is ideas, and, and we need, we need you folks to, to support the idea that we need to move forward, we're gonna, we're gonna start doing the asbestos inspections very soon, and then it'll be the abatement on the buildings, and frankly, if we've got a block of them, and, and you guys have decided to go ahead with the parking lot in that area, there's no time like the present to get moving on it, so we can, we can work through that this summer, and, but yeah, it's about 120 parking spaces we're taking out, so we're gonna have to do a good job with designing, and, and I think that's one of the, Commissioner Waylon and Commissioner Campbell have also talked about, a two-story law enforcement center over in the block, which does pre-up for more parking over there, and lots of different positive things for, for it, so, yeah, again, there's a lot of moving parts that need to be discussed and, and talked about, so. Last Friday morning, we had a breakfast meeting too, with, with reference the P3 financing and just kind of the whole financing issues of, of the sales tax on the North Dakota side, and how that all fits in and how it all comes together, it's, it's, it's pretty interesting stuff, actually, it's kind of complicated. We had new hire orientation yesterday, and probably had the most we've ever had, nine or the 10 there?
Ten.
Ten, ten, that went well, I think. Last night, I attended that with the, the two commissioners on the community facility meeting that we had with the city, county, and school. Commissioner Waylon talked about the Senator, Senate Capital Investment Committee that we are going down on tomorrow, that's from 1:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon, and then I attended the Aigs and Issues this morning as well, so that's about it.
Mr. Chairman, if I, seeing as we talked about that deal on April 26th, currently we have planned to give a presentation on Wednesday morning, April 27th, here at the courthouse at 7:00 AM to the Morehead Business Association, and that's, it's actually, they actually are gonna hold their meeting here, but we're, we've invited them to have it here. I just wanna make sure that, that the proper notification is out so that if all board members wanna come to that, that we don't have an open meeting issue, so, so whatever we need to do from, from a notification standpoint there, there, we're not gonna be formally as a board, but I know probably Commissioner Waylon and I and Brian will be doing a presentation as the committee members on it, but I certainly would, would like to see the other commissioners there as well to greet the MBA when they're here, so.
Okay. All right, I think everybody got, no, oh, excuse me.
If you wanna put that in your calendar, I think it would be good.
I think everybody got a notice on the township meeting coming up, March 21st, and also I got a notice from the Buffalo River Watership Board that they're holding some meetings on the flood damage reduction. Those meetings are gonna be at Rodsey, March 15th, Barnsville, March 18th, and Lake Park, March 22nd, so if anybody's interested in the flood reduction program with Buffalo Watership. Vicki, you got something? How'd you do, Darren? You got anything to bring forward? Jenny?
In addition to the April 27th meeting, also that crossed my mind for the Prairie Lakes meeting on the 23rd, would need notification for open meeting as well.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, we'll return.